Okay, sir. I'll make sure that the proclamation gets signed by the council president this week, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Law's 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in the city hall, filed in the city clerk's office, and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. And I call the roll. Mr. Blakely, are you present, sir? Ms. Colwell-Wilson. Ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, if you were not on the Trenton City Council, please mute yourself at this time. We prefer not to have this meeting interrupted. Thank you. Mr. Harrison. Mr. Michelle.
President.
Mr. Harrison. Ms. Vaughn. Council President McBride.
Present.
Madam, we have a call.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Law's 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in the city hall, filed in the city clerk's office, and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. And I call the roll. Mr. Blakely, are you present, sir? Ms. Colwell-Wilson. Ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, if you were not on the Trenton City Council, please mute yourself at this time. We prefer not to have this meeting interrupted. Thank you. Mr. Harrison. Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Mr. Harrison. Ms. Vaughn. Council President McBride.
Present.
Madam, we have a call.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Just trying to find some of the background noise before we go on so I can hear everybody. Mr. Cruz.
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Cherry.
I'm present. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Liston.
I'm present.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Mr. Bridges. Mr. Bridges is after. Ms. Samuel, are you here tonight for Mr. Bridges? Anyone from the law department? Director Coley.
President. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. Chief Mazer.
Present. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Director Dela. Director Lopez.
Good evening. I'm present.
Good evening, Dr. Lopez. Director Honatieri.
Good evening, President.
Good evening, sir. Director Rich.
I am present. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. Director Laffenberg.
Present.
Director Zelinski.
Present.
Very good.
Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am.
I did not hear anyone from the law department. Could Mr. Cruz get someone from the law department on this meeting, in this meeting?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm just going to make sure that I'm going to reemail the meeting link at the same time.
Hello, it's Councilwoman Vaughn.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, sir.
Ma'am, we're just waiting. We're just waiting on Mr. Cruz to contact somebody from the law department.
Oh, okay.
But I have noted you were present for the record. Council President, while we wait, do you want me to proceed with the invocation of the flag salute?
Yes.
Got that. If we could all bow our heads. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city of these deliberations and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and their greater glory. We also pray that you welcome into your arms Nishira Peterson, who has joined you last year and had a ceremony this week. And we also pray that COVID-19 pandemic ends soon.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Amen. And ladies and gentlemen, if you could please take this time to mute yourself. If you are not on the city council, it would be greatly appreciated. Otherwise, we will be meeting you for background noise. If we could all rise for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Samuel, have you arrived? Anybody from the law department arrived yet?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I apologize for being late. Sally Samuel on behalf of the law department.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Council President, would you like me to proceed to the docket?
Yes, please.
There are no minutes. We have a new staff member joining us, and we are also going back to full time on Monday. That will be corrected. As we explained at the conference on Tuesday, there are 12 communications and petitions.
I'm sorry, Council President. Are we going back into the chambers? Is that what Mr. Collin just said?
No, ma'am. The staff is returning to full time on Monday.
Okay. All right. So we have to decide. All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. We have communications and petitions from the clerk's office. There are 12 communications and petitions. Clerk's office has a report. City Clerk's office submitting the approval of the monthly revenue report for the month of April 2021, where funds collected by the office staff totaling $9,525. I have a motion for approval of communications and petitions.
So moved. Check it.
A motion by Mr. Harrison. Is that Mr. Harrison who made that motion or Mr. Blakely? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. I thought so. A second by Minister Michelle. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
So ordered. Communications and petitions are approved. Council President, would you like me to proceed to the resolutions?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Conlon, on the resolutions, I do have a request for roll call. I wanted to have the change orders. I want those roll called, all three of them. I think it's 21-187.
They are roll called.
21-186 and 28-185. They are all roll called.
21-185 is not, so I'll add that. I'll pull that from the consent agenda.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
And I have a couple that I would like to pull as well.
Yes, ma'am. Which number, ma'am?
The Malley Law Firm. I'm sorry, I was not able. I can't see the resolution right now.
I got it, ma'am. It's Malley Givens.
The resolution to appoint, I mean, the Malley Law Firm for the Ethics Board. And also, there's a resolution to accept an application for a grant, Director Maria Richardson.
Okay, so the resolution from Malley Givens is 21-162. The resolution for Maria Richardson to accept the Five Star and Urban Waters Grant, is that the one you're talking about for 100?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's 21-188.
And Mr. Conlon, I would also like a roll call for Resolution 21-165. That's Iglesio, Iglesio Webster.
Yes, ma'am. I'll note that for the record. That is also being moved, repealed from the consent agenda. Any other council members have any questions to pull from the consent agenda?
Yeah, one more. The Blough and Blough Law Firm.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, that is, let me find that. That is Resolution 21-168 for the record is moved to the consent agenda, moved to roll call.
Yep.
Any other resolutions? That being said, do I have a motion to, ma'am, would you like me to read the consent agenda numbers to the record?
Please.
We have for the record for the consent agenda 21-161, 21-163, 21-164, 21-166, 21-170, 21-172, 21-173, 21-174, 21-175, 21-176, 21-189, 21-190, 21-158, 21-183. That's it. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Wait a minute, Mr. Collin, I'm looking for, I'm looking for the resolutions to to reimburse on the, they should be under Department of Housing and Economic Development, the resolutions to refund. Are those already being roll called?
Yes, ma'am. They're all being roll called. Yes, ma'am. They're all being roll called.
Okay. All righty, listen. So I would like to offer explanation to the, when you get to the the change orders and, and one for the refunding of, for the auctions. All righty.
Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Council Vice President Colwell-Wilson. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Council President McBride seconds. And I call the roll. Mr. Blakely.
He's on mute.
Councilman Blakely.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you, sir. Colwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
And it's President McBride.
Yes.
The word of the House is approved. Council President, would you like me to proceed through the docket?
Please.
First in the docket tonight, we have Resolution 21-118, a resolution approving a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of an area retail consumption license 1111-33-184-006. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I have motion by Council President McBride. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Ms. Colwell-Wilson. Floor is open.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
If we are intending to pass this resolution, we better take the residence of that peaceful peace of Trenton that we had down the Deep Center Street and Second Street, the sector where they are planning to place that bar. There used to be a bar there years ago, the Anco Bar. And there were a lot of problems with it. The neighbors had a lot of problems with it, and eventually that bar was closed. And the license, I believe, is now with Dubai. It used to be a bar there. That place does not have enough, it has supposedly eight spaces, parking spaces, is now presently used as a grocery store, which eight parking spaces are enough for a grocery store because people don't hang around there for hours. But for a bar, it's not parking in that, available for that bar. The people that will be coming in front, most likely from New Brunswick and Person Boy, who hang around there all night, they will be parking on Center and Second. Laylaw, there is no parking on Laylaw, so they cannot park in Laylaw at all. So I believe that we should take into consideration our residents before anybody that would like to open a liquor business in Trenton. We have had plenty of problems with one on Bayou Street. We used to have a lot of problems with one on Center and Federer. And every month, every time we have an ABC meeting, we have problems, complaints, police have been called, you know, to various liquor establishments in the city. I don't think that one more is not going to do any good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to be clear on the person-to-person, excuse me, the place-to-place. The ABC Board made the decision to, to give them the placement, and I think that that lies within the state and the ABC Board. I don't think that we have a right to withdraw that place-to-place based on the ABC Board consenting to it. Mr. Collin, because the clerk's office works with the ABC Board, could you expound on this place-to-place?
Well, it's a, it's a sale of a business. It's one gentleman who was owned the liquor license for a time period. He's selling it to another gentleman who, I believe, owns another liquor license in another municipality. He passed his back check. They did go to the zoning board. The zoning board said, but is fit for particular places. I went down and I drove through the neighborhood. I did ask the people if they remember receiving the notices. I did check the file. The notices were received by the residents, but the residents didn't really remember. They did say, you know, as long as they're quiet, you know. And they said if they're not quiet, I told them to call my office if they have any complaints. On those four corners, there is, and it's sort of a grocery store, but it's really a cheesesteak place that has like a convenience store aspect to it. Across is a Mexican restaurant. On the other corner is a, an empty commercial space that's for lease. And then on the other corner is a sewer processing facility. So there are parking spaces up front. There is heavy traffic there right now. I stayed there for about a half hour. In the time that I was there, 45 vehicles had come on through that establishment. It was around lunchtime, so it was a lunchtime pickup, but that, that parking lot does get a lot of use from the current grocery store. And like I said, a half hour in the counter in lunch was 45 vehicles pulling in and out in that time period. So it's getting heavy traffic right now. I don't know if that's necessarily going to increase with the bar or not, but they have passed their background checks. I don't endorse or otherwise, you know, not endorse. It is up to you as the city council to approve the ultimate application. They passed every other check.
Madam President, point of clarification. This case never went into the, in front of the zoning board. It was approved by the zoning officer. A different entity never had a hearing in front of the zoning board.
That is correct. I never said he went in front of the zoning board. It was approved by the zoning officer because it is, because it is permitted for use and there is no variance required. There was no reason for them to go in front of the zoning board. There was nothing to compel them to be pulled in front of the zoning board. They needed no permissions there. So the zoning officer had found that there wasn't permitted use there. It was zoned for that type of use, and he approved it accordingly. And we actually did, when Mr. Rodriguez asked that it be pulled, we sent it back to the zoning officer, and he redid his analysis, checked all the files and checked the maps. The requirements are there, and he did, he doubled down on his approval.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The residents, the residents of this nice and quiet neighborhood never had a chance to go, there was no hearing on this. They never had it because the zoning officer decided on his own that no variance was needed. I do not know about that because we are transferring from a grocery store to a liquor, to a bar. Not a liquor store, a bar, you know, and there's no variance required there. I'm not too sure about that part. You know, that, that means that anybody could come to my corner here and open up a bar, and I have nothing to say about it. You know, what was done there was very unfair on the neighbors. And I, I, I will oppose this opening of this bar. If it's a person-to-person transfer, there will be no problem, but a place-to-place there, that place is not adequate for a bar.
All righty. So noted, Councilman.
Just one point of information. There was a public newspaper advertisement for two consecutive weeks for the commencement of this establishment, and a 200-foot list was acquired by the, by the new owner or the, you know, the prospective new owner, and the, and the certified mailings did go out, and there were no objections received from anybody within 200 feet of the establishment. I think that listed about 45, somewhere in 30 to 45 addresses, and no objections were received on this.
Point of clarification, Madam President. Those mailings were sent. I have the list of the mailings. There were two homeowners there, two residents. The rest, they are absentee landlords from outside the city. They don't live there. The residents were not notified themselves.
That's what the newspaper advertisement was for, sir.
All righty, so we may proceed to the vote.
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion by Council President McBride, a second by Council Vice President Colwell-Wilson. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Councilwoman Vaughn, will you?
She's still muted, ma'am.
Okay. I concur with Councilman Rodriguez.
Your vote, ma'am.
Oh, well, I see that the Fab Five is in full consent effect.
Your vote, your vote, Councilwoman.
Okay, member of the Fab Five, I will. And my answer is no.
Thank you, ma'am. Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Vote five. Would you like to proceed to the next docket, ma'am?
Full force in effect.
Yes.
Next we have Resolution 21-162, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the law office of Malley Givens, D.C. to provide professional services to the Trenton Ethics Board, referred over process according to NJSA 1944, Cafe 20.5 et cetera, not to exceed $25,000 in 2021-07.
Yes, Council President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes. This is the Malley Law Firm, the Malley Givens Law Firm, that supported a review or investigation for the alleged of activity, the alleged bid rigging activity around the transaction with a, a TPA contractor named K E J Associates, whereby the, the Malley Givens Law Firm had a previous contract, and they did submit their, I guess, a finding document that was made available to the council and the press. It arrived in a city clerk's office on December 22, and I believe it was timestamped on December the 28. I'm going to reference that document, I'm going to make sure I got the right one. And, yeah, the Malley Givens Law Firm. Yeah, yeah. So the document is several pages long, and it goes in chronological order of the, the events around that alleged legal transaction at the Trenton Parking Authority, the taxpayers' parking authority, whereby four commissioners, four commissioners acted, colluded to hire a contractor and hire one of their fellow commissioners who was ineligible to be hired because he had not yet been not a non-commissioner for a period of a year. And the Malley Law Firm put those, outlined all of those events in their letter. It was six pages long. They summarized it with their recommendations, and they summarized it with their findings and conclusions. So we have that document, and actually, in my opinion, it's very well done. So the Malley Law Firm has presented their findings and conclusions, presented their recommendation in a document that was sent, that was dated December 22 of 2020 and timestamped at the city clerk's office on December 28, 2020. So I don't quite understand why we need to hire them again to do the work that they've already done for another 25 grand. And I don't perceive that to be a use of, a good use of taxpayer dollars, just because selecting the visuals that have been caught in the cookie jar doing illegal activity over at our parking authority been discovered in their actions and been exposed to the public for their illicit activity. They want to bring the Malley Law Firm back and try to influence or change their findings and recommendations that they've already put forth. Now, I would just say to my councilmember, the Fab Five, either you're part of the problem or you're part of the solution. You're part of the disease or you're part of the cure. Either you want to see our city and our departments clean and be managed by good governance, by people that we put there. Before we put in, you're five, wait a minute, how many commissioners over there? We have seven commissioners over at the Trenton Parking Authority. And I say this for all the boards and committees that serve and volunteer for this city. And I'm sure most of us do it ethically. But others want to game the system. They want to steal and offer unfair practices and give advantages to their family and friends, unfair advantages. So I am telling you that my councilmembers on Tuesday voted down a resolution for me and for this city to address these individuals who participated in that outrageous vote to advantage their fellow commissioner who was not eligible for that role. So I'm telling you that the Malley Law Firm and their findings and recommendations that have already been put forth, I don't know if my councilmembers have already read it. They seem not to read anything else that's put on the docket. So I will say that I will be voting no for this, this law firm to come back and support the Ethics Board because they've already done their job, and they've done it well. And I will tell you, because I read the document several times, and a lot of my constituents here in the West Ward has read it. of my constituents here in the West Ward has read it. And actually, there are many people beyond the borders of Trenton has read it and thought it was very concise. So, I will just ask that my councilmembers, you know, vote in a, in a very informed manner. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. I yield my time, Council President McBride.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Colwell Wilson?
Yeah, um, the attorneys for the Ethics Board handle other cases, not just this one case. And they are required, according to their structure, to have an attorney onboard to represent them when they have to do legal investigations. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Collin, you may continue with the vote.
Yes, ma'am, I need a motion.
So move.
So move.
By Mr. Blakely. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Miss second by Ms. Colwell Wilson, I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Thank you, the resolution passed by a vote of five to ten. Next we have Resolution 21-165. Let me just make sure, go back to my notes. Yes, ma'am. Next we have Resolution 21-165, resolution authorizing amendment to the contract with the Law Office of Iglesio Webster Casilla and Taylor, LLC 600 Precippany RF, Suite 204, Precippany, New Jersey, 0705, for continued professional legal services regarding legal representation in regards to general municipal and other legal matters in amount not to exceed $50,000. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison, the floor is open.
Okay, so, um, I wanted this roll called because Iglesio and Webster represented me in a, in a case and they were terminated by me and they took on other cases in the city without, um, doing the conflict analysis, showing where they were conflicted out. And I believe that not only were they conflicted out, but I believe that they, um, took upon themselves to not do, have the analysis done, which is not good practice in the city. And I will not support them not showing where they were conflicted out after they were terminated by me, um, to represent me in, um, cases that, uh, the mayor had brought against me. Um, so I will be voting no for this particular law firm. You may, um, you may continue, Mr. Collin.
Would you like to call the vote, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Uh, I have an introduction by Mr. Blakely, a second by Mr. Harrison, Mr. Blakely. I'm, Mr. Blakely, I muted you, but I, sorry about that, there was feedback coming off your mic, thank you. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, no.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution fails by a vote of five to two against. Next we have Resolution 21-168, a resolution authorizing contract extension to the Law Offices of Blau and Blau, attorneys at law to continue to provide professional legal services regarding negative taxes through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19:44, CA 20.5, et cetera, to the city Trenton tax office. Do I have a motion?
Oh, so move. I just have a question.
Get the motion on the floor in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, so move.
I have a motion by Ms. Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
Miss second by Ms. Colwell Wilson, floor is open.
Right, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, thank you. So, um, my question is, is, uh, Blau and Blau, I know they've been around for a long time doing what they do, uh, addressing tax, tax issues, uh, of the city. Um, what is the amount that we're, um, proposing the contract? Because I didn't think I saw that on there.
Uh, it is, well, they're paid by contingency fee, ma'am, so they pay.
Thirty-three point three percent.
They receive thirty-three point three percent of the monies that they recover in the increase in the taxes for negative reverse tax. And I'm sure, I think Ms. Samuel is here from the Law Department, she can probably explain the fee arrangement much better.
Yeah, so, is that, is that, um, standard, is that a standard, um, application or percentage, Ms. Samuel? Is that an industry standard or a government standard?
Um, uh, Council President, um, can I?
Yes, yes, go right ahead, Ms. Samuels.
Thank you very much. Yes, in response to your question, Councilwoman Vaughn, that is the industry standard. Um, it's usually thirty-third, thirty-three and a third contingents, uh, when, when you're being paid on a contingency basis. And as the clerk indicated, they only get paid if they recover, um, um, you know, monies for the city. So, if they don't recover any monies in, uh, in a negative tax appeal application, then they get paid zero. So, say for, yeah.
Yep, understood now. I appreciate that, you providing that clarity, Ms. Samuel. I yield my time, Councilman, Council President McBride.
All righty, thank you. Uh, Mr. Collin, you may continue.
Yes, ma'am, I have a motion by Councilmember Vaughn, a second by Councilmember Colwell Wilson, I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Next we have Resolution 21-188, a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of a five-star urban waters grant to improve property 100 in Widge Avenue. So I have a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson, floor is open.
Okay, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, um, is Maria Richardson on the line?
Yes.
Wait a minute, this is not the one. This is not the one I roll call.
Mr. Collin?
Mr. Collin, this is not the one.
Well, there's, you, ma'am, you identified the one from Mr. Maria Richardson's department as the grant.
Yeah, I said the $1 million one that is accepted in the application. I'm sorry that, yeah, I think, yeah, this is not the right one.
No, this is the only grant that's under Maria Richardson, the other one is a contract.
Oh.
The other one is for $21,000, uh, uh, not.
Where did I see the one that was accepting a grant for $1 million?
I don't know, ma'am, I'm not.
Okay, well, all right, well, uh, this is fine. I, I mean, we can go to the vote.
Okay.
Uh, I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson, Mr. Blakely.
Councilman Blakely, unmute yourself.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Next we have Resolution 21-177, a resolution, mending Resolution 20-671, rescinding the sale of certain property authorized thereby and authorizing the return of a deposit, excuse me, authorizing the return of a deposit. Do I have a motion?
Where, where?
Resolution 21-177. Okay, we jumped a bit, there was a big, there was a big set of.
Okay, so we're, we're on the, um?
We're on the return of the, uh, the items for the option.
All right, now, I gotta find out which property this is.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna move this because I want to have some discussion. Uh, so, um, I, I, so move.
I have a motion by Ms. Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson, floor?
Yeah, I'm trying to, um.
All right.
Could you give me, wait a minute, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, let me, um, pull up my, um, the actual, uh, resolution.
And this is for 942 South Clinton Avenue, ma'am.
942.
This is a rather delusion where they were, they, they had to end up going to the zoning board because the city was not clear on the, uh?
Is this, is this the one that was deemed commercial and residential?
Uh-huh.
Yes, yes, Council President.
Yes, ma'am, this is the one.
Okay. All right, yeah. Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn, I was just trying to get the right resolution in front of me.
Yes, all right, thank you. And, um, so, um, Ms. Samuels, um, and I'm sure Mr. Delisle is on the line. Um, I did receive the email and the information that I requested from Tuesday evening regarding the, the contracts. However, I mean, it's really a spreadsheet, it's not what I was expecting, but it's just, what you sent me was just a list of, um, uh, auction closing reports. Uh, it was, it was a report, right? It was a spreadsheet that said, these are the number of properties we have, um, uh, closing that are closed. And there's a, then you gave me a spreadsheet listing, all the addresses that are under contract, correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
Yes. And of course, it's, it's just a listing primarily. Um, and I was just hoping to see some, you know, a signed-off contract, right? So, when you go and anybody go purchase a home, you know, or a car, any type of asset that's securitized by loan or whatever or a deposit, you get a contract that says you, you made a potential interest and you deposit $100 or whatever, and this is your remaining balance on closing debt. And that's the type of contract that I was hoping that I would get for these properties, but I just want to know, why, why didn't I get that? Did I not, was I not clear? Did I not articulate it properly?
Council President, this is Ben Delisle, may I respond?
Yes, you, yes, you may, uh?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Vaughn, I apologize, you were not clear. I thought you just wanted a listing of the outstanding contracts, not the actual contract itself. So I, uh, I must have misunderstood.
Okay, okay, no worries. Um, so, but, you know, it's pretty impressive, I must say. I give credit where credit is due. It appears that your list for properties closing, you have more in closing than you have under contract, is that right?
Overall, yes, ma'am.
Yes. But I didn't see a calculation of the percentage, though. What do you think it is, 70, 30? Like what?
Council President, if I may, Councilwoman, I, I don't know, I didn't calculate that. It's certainly in the, beyond 50%, maybe 60%, sure.
Okay. So, um, all right, but I would want to see, I mean, I think it's fair that the council sees these contracts, right? The written one, the documentation. Because the reason why I say that, because I was very interested as well to see some of the supporting statutes and law that support some of your decision-making, right? So, because we always want to be compliant, and as you know, Mr. Delisle and Ms. Samuels, that the council and the Law Department had, had some challenges, many challenges in different areas whereby, you know, misinterpretation of the law has happened, thereby we, we took approaches that were not so legal or ethical because of the lack of a standing, of lack of understanding what the law permits us to do and not do. So, this is why I asked. I didn't ask to try to, uh, point a finger at you two or say, gotcha. I, I'm asking because we always want to move cautiously when we're track, transaction, transacting the city's business and playing around with the, well, I shouldn't say that, but, um, uh, transacting the city business and, and managing the city assets, like our real estate, like our parking authority, right? These are assets for the city and for the taxpayers. So, we take our public property and our authorities that hold these assets, real estate, um, seriously. So, I just want, I know that, Mr. Delisle, you do take them seriously. So, that's why we ask for the written documentation and the written agreement. And I know if people, if we don't have them, that's fine, too, but at least come clean to the council and say, we don't have them all and we need to get them and we're working on getting them and we're working on getting a cleaner process around this so we can have good governance in this city for once in a lifetime, right? So, can we get those contracts at some juncture? Um, because I, you know, every transaction we have, we should have a documented document and people signed on to it in agreement. So, there's never a misinterpretation of whether they should get their money back or not get their money back. So, that's all I'm saying and I, you know, and that's what my challenge is, because I'm afraid, I'm a bit resistant, I won't say afraid, because I'm not afraid, but I'm, I'm a bit resistant to signing on things that I don't see any documentation around. And if I don't see a contract, if I don't see it in black and white, I, I have concerns. And, and that's what I, I, I hope that you hear me, Mr. Delisle and, and Ms. Samuels, mainly Ms. Samuels, because you're, you're our attorney and we depend on your legal expertise. So, that's all I'm gonna say about that and I appreciate your effort, but, uh, but you should, in these type of transactions that, that, um, that involve the city assets, their real estate assets, their property, their, their primary, their, their, their prime redevelopment, we need to see some serious documentation, okay? We can't play any games with our asset considering we are in fiscal crisis in the city of Trenton. Thank you, that's all I have to say, Council President.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Collin, you may continue with the vote. Mr. Collin, for some reason or another, you're.
Uh, this is a resolution, I have a motion by Councilmember Vaughn, a second by Councilmember Colwell Wilson, I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
No.
Mr. Blakely votes no, Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Um, yes, I just want to say something before I vote, that I'm really upset with the city not doing research and background on this property. Um, and the reason why they're giving this deposit back is because this gentleman had to require to go to the zoning board for a variance, um, through no fault of the zone, so I will vote yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
I'd like to change my vote, Council, uh, Mr. Collin, to yes?
Yes, sir. And the vote is not completed yet. Mr. Blakely changes his vote to yes, Council President McBride.
Um, I'll vote yes to refund this particular monies based on the city's fault.
So ordered, the resolution passed by a vote of four to three. Next we have Resolution 21-178, resolution rescinding the sale of 811, 813, 815, and 817, Beatty Street, to man out the leaker and also retainage of the deposit.
Mr. Collin, I'll, um, uh, move the motion.
Thank you, Council President.
I need to discuss this.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson, a motion by Council President McBride.
Okay, so, Mr. Uh, Mr. Delisle, what I'm looking at here in this particular Resolution 21-178 is a five-year activity. There is no way that the city of Trenton needs to be giving money back, returning funds for a contract that took place in 2016.
Council President?
As far as I could see it, this, the property should have been up and running in five years, not getting money back. And I don't, uh, there, there is no explanation for a five-year period, not even the fact that it didn't happen under your watch is not even a good explanation. There should not be any refunding for. There should not be any refunding for five years. We cannot go back to twenty sixteen. What you're doing is you're opening up floodgates here and those, uh, those auction, uh, um, contracts should be clear. I, I can't accept that, uh, twenty-one dash one seventy-eight.
Council, Council President.
I wish you wouldn't interrupt me, Mr. Delisle. I, I, I wish that. And, and that's all I have to say. None of the other council members, we can move to the vote.
I have a question.
Mr. Council President, do you want to hear Mr. Blakely, please?
Yes, he could put his question to the floor. If it's to Mr. Delisle, get it in writing.
What do you mean, get it in writing? I want to ask Mr. Delisle a question about.
Did, did Mr. Did Mr. Delisle not hear me?
I am asking the question to Mr. Delisle.
Go right ahead, Councilman Blakely. Ask the question.
Thank you. Mr. Delisle, could you give us some insight into this particular resolution?
You can give it in writing.
In writing? There's a vote on the floor now. What do you mean, get it in writing? That's ridiculous. I have a question now about a vote that's about to take.
Point of clarification?
Excuse me, Madam President.
Obviously, we have a member with a point of clarification. He should be heard.
Go right ahead, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, on this specific, uh, resolution, we are not returning, we are keeping the deposit.
That is correct.
Thank you. You may continue.
I just want to be clear that Councilman Rodriguez can ask the question and Councilman Blakely.
You may continue with the vote, Mr. Conlon.
That is absolutely ridiculous, but whatever.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Rodriguez raised a point of clarification. Mr. Blakely, your vote, sir?
I'm not saying because I can't ask a question.
Very good, sir. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Actually, our resolution twenty-one dash one seventy-nine, a resolution amending resolution twenty-dash-six-seventy-one. Rescinding the sale of certain property authorized thereby and authorizing the return of the balance of the deposit. This is for, uh, eight forty-two Riverside Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Go, miss.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second? Was that you, Mr. Blakely? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Do I have a second on this motion?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Vaughn.
And I have a question, Council President McBride?
Go right ahead.
Um, again, um, Ms. Samuels?
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn, I'm here.
Yes. Um, you know, uh, here it is. Riverside Avenue is a, you know, that, that street used, used to be, um, I mean, it faces the river, you know? So I deem that to be, you know, a, I mean, prime, you know, good real estate for the city of Trenton in the future. So, and it is in my ward. I want to say that, too. Um, it's in the West Ward. And I'm looking at the bid price on this property, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Wow, that's, that's, that's a lot, right? And that's a lot of money for somebody to cancel, to cancel and get their money back, twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. Now, I don't understand how a person puts, uh, what? That, um, sized deposit down and, um, have no intention of buying. How does that work?
Council President, can I answer the question?
Yes, go right ahead. Ms. Samuels?
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman Vaughn. Um, just, let me just clarify first and say that we are only returning nineteen thousand six hundred dollars of the twenty-one six hundred. That's still a large amount, but I just want to, I still want to clarify that. And, um, as to your question about whether the person puts down, you know, that such a large deposit and then turns around and has no intention to buy, um, I don't believe that this purchaser had no intention to buy. As indicated in the resolution, um, our department, the Department of Housing and Economic Development.
Uh, Mr. Conlon, can you mute that person that has on, that, that's making all that noise?
I've taken, I've taken care of it. It was Mr. Blakely's feedback. We'll take care of it. Mr. Blakely, when, when you need to speak, just unmute yourself with a spacebar, please, sir. Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Mrs. Samuel.
Yes. Um, our Housing, Economic and Development Department was provided with a lot of information and proofs indicating that after this purchaser had made the deposits in good faith, that he at that time then lost his, um, mother and his brother and his wife is indefinitely ill, all as a result of COVID nineteen. Um, and let me just say that this particular buyer is already a Trenton resident. So he was looking to invest in his community. Um, we were also advised that he's also a city employee. Let me just say that he's also of African descent. So when his mother and his brother died, he was left with the responsibility of taking care of his brother's family in Nigeria. And so because of those burdens, like, he really wanted to be able to go through with this. Um, and, and if you would note that, uh, the next resolution that we would consider was another property that he had purchased. And at first, he was willing, he was trying to see if he could just afford one property. But as his wife continued to be ill and not working, and he was responsible now for taking care of two families, he indicated that he could not go through with any of the purchases. And so as not to, basically, you know, we can't force anybody. There, there, there's still risks in doing real estate in that, you know, he could cancel. But understanding that COVID negatively impacted his ability to purchase, we agreed that we would give back his deposit minus the one thousand dollar initial deposit and also one thousand dollar administrative, um, fee, you know, uh, to cover our costs and, you know, our, our damages, in essence. And so that's really how we wound up here, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn. And again, I don't believe that he did not intend to, because he did make that good faith deposit within the timeframes that he were, was supposed to. But then subsequent to that, he had all of these adverse circumstances impact his ability to purchase the property.
Yep, I get it. And, um, yes, I, I understand that. And, um, mortgage companies all over the, all over the country, you know, a lot for hardship, right? So I guess what you're describing is hardship, right? So he encountered hardship. So, but that goes back to housing economic development, right? And I think we had this conversation before in a prior council session, is that when you put these, how do you minimize, you know, this type of risk, right? It is a risk that you have auctions and people says, oh, I changed my mind. And you don't, Trent does not want to get in a reputation where people can think that they can get their money back when they decide to change their mind. And I'm not saying, you know, this is a horrific story and people come in hardships, but we don't want everybody coming to us and saying, you know, I can't go through with a closing because all these things happen to me in life. And I know for a fact that mortgage companies, you know, um, I, I, uh, they're immune to that, right? So, um, so I'm just curious, why would we not be as well? And if there is some alternatives that if we want to be sensitive to our residents, you know, he should, residents should get priority, they should get favor, they should get access to special programs, and I'm all for that. So, and, and in that vein, why hasn't the Housing Economic Development Department, as I mentioned to Mr. Delisle, uh, several moons ago, that, why aren't we aligning ourselves and partnering with community banks and et cetera to help these people who want to invest in Trenton to finance these properties for, um, to help them, you know, make it, right? So this is a, a, a nice property. It faces the river. Um, why not, why was, why isn't there a program in place that, and I know that it happens in other cities and towns, that can help people like this gentleman, right? He, he, he put in a, a good firm deposit down. And if we had a partnership with the bank, a community bank, Mr. Delisle, um, because I know, I spent a significant time in Harlem. And I know Mr. Delisle is familiar with it. I, I, I mean, when Harlem was under its revitalization and President Clinton decided to move there and put his office there to boost the interest and investors to come to Harlem, you know, the local churches and, and the community and, and the city, I think it was, uh, Bloomberg was the mayor at the time, said, look, anybody who buys in this zone in Harlem, uh, we're going to offer the CDCs, the, I, I know the Abyssity Baptist Church with their, uh, Community Development Corporation and, uh, with their, um, they have a credit union at that church. And they helped to get people to what they call home improvement loans at a very discounted rate. Now, this gentleman would have been a prime, um, candidate for that. He's a resident of the city. He lives here. He wants to invest to help us with our economic turnaround. Instead of giving him back his deposit, why can't we help him over the home? And Mr. Delisle, can you answer me that question? Mr. Delisle?
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead. Go right ahead, Mr. Delisle.
Councilwoman Vaughn, uh, you know, could certainly look to partner with financial institutions, um, to help him. The, the, the gentleman has indicated that he's unwilling or unable to move forward with the purchase. Whether or not he had access to different finances or capital, I, I don't know that that would have made a difference in this instance. Uh, and again, we can absolutely, and the department continues to look at different programs, such as the ones you're describing. This is pertaining to the auction and this particular transaction. I think for something like you'd say, and we'd have to put this to the side and, and try and work with them for an extended period of time to, to work it out. And that's a, you know, arms-length transaction type stuff you're talking about, not, you know, an auction that, um, is very defined, you know, uh, terms and time periods. I.
Yeah, I, so, but again, if, you know, somebody like this, you're being the director of economic development. These are opportunities, in my opinion, for you to say, you know, someone like this come to you and say, you know, Mr. Delisle, blah, blah, blah. It's just an opportunity for you to say, you know, sir, I, I may have something to help you. I may have a program that I'm thinking about that can possibly help you. Sometimes the customer or the client or the, or the resident is not aware of all these type of potential programs that are out there. But with your level of expertise, you are aware. So I'm just saying, we got to be a little more creative around here, okay? So that's all. Um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilwoman Colwell Wilson?
Yes, um, you know, I, this really concerns me because we're not just losing a twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars in deposit, we're losing a sale of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And, and we tend to forget that. And, you know, my concern is that this gentleman bid for this during a COVID. Um, my question, um, to Mr. Delisle is, did he produce documents showing his expenses for, um, going to Africa for taking care of these journals? I mean, we are opening up floodgates here that once the word gets out that we returned a deposit due to COVID, I'm afraid that we are going to end up, um, having all these properties back on the roads and our, um, revenues are going to drop considerably. So I have a real issue with this, and I think that, um, if this, if this gentleman felt that he could afford to pay two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for a piece of property, then obviously he is financially stable. But then again, I don't know, and it's like the Council President said to me, um, do they look at the finances of these people when they're spending this much money? Because the bank looks at your finances to see if you can afford it. So I have a real, I have a, a serious issue of, um, voting for this, voting yes on this due to COVID pandemic. Thank you.
President McBride?
Go right ahead.
No, I just want to say, uh, you know, I've been reflecting on this and, you know, I think that, um, generally, I'm opposed to returning, uh, deposits. But I think that there are some mitigating circumstances in this particular situation. Now, number one, the gentleman is already a, uh, Trent resident. He is also a city employee. And I think that in general, um, you know, we should definitely try to be sympathetic, particularly since, you know, this gentleman has suffered such a tremendous personal loss and has greater responsibility. And so for that reason, you know, trying to be as, uh, understanding and, and Christian-like and generous as possible, um, I'm going to vote in favor of this. Generally, like, as I mentioned, this is not going to be a habit. But I think, you know, if he was not a Trent resident, I probably would not, um, vote, uh, you know, in favor of this. But considering this gentleman does have, you know, several mitigating circumstances and, uh, you know, I think it would be, um, thoughtful and, and kind for someone who is a resident of this city as well as an employee of this city to, uh, to cut the man some slack in this particular circumstance. If this person was from somewhere else, I would say, no, you know, tough luck. But this person has admitted himself to our city enough and we should not try to, I don't want to say take advantage of him in such a, um, you know, in such a tough time for him. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting yes. Um, you know, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Um, I have two questions for Mr. Delisle. The first one, Director, is if we, if we, uh, make this exception to this, uh, particular, uh, client, a purchaser, what, what kind of mechanisms do you have in place to keep this from opening up floodgates for other COVID situations? That's the first question. And then the second question, it lends to, um, Council Vice Chair and Councilwoman Vaughn's, uh, statement. How, how could you possibly work with this individual if he, if his main purpose is the COVID situation? And if he wanted to maintain the property, how would you be able to assist him within the guidelines of the law? So those are my two questions to you, Mr. Delisle.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, to the first question, you know, these are, um, you know, extenuating circumstances. We take them on a case-by-case basis and certainly bring them to counsel for consideration. And these aren't things that we do lightly, like, take lightly or, you know, would have done just administratively, uh, in the department. That being said, we can certainly look to, um, strengthening the rules and the disclaimers and the, um, you know, for lack of a better term, the, the heads up, the buyer beware, um, when we do the auctions and we advertise the auctions. And may state upfront that, hey, you know, no more COVID excuses or death in the family is, uh, will not be, uh, an allowed excuse or whatever it is. But we can look to tighten the rules in the upfront disclosures during the auction. To the second question, with what we can do to help him, um, you know, the, the gentleman really didn't express any interest in anything like that. I mean, I think he's been so overwhelmed and so exasperated with his personal circumstances that that wasn't, you know, really on his mind. Um, you, you know, certainly we could give him more time to look to, for, you know, financial, uh, lending, look to see if he could find a partner or someone to assign the contract to. Um, you know, we, we could potentially, uh, issue him a money mortgage in that he could pay us over time. Uh, basically, the city delaying its payment. Um, you know, that, that is permissible, and that's something that was in the auction, in auction rules. Uh, again, these aren't things that he had expressed, you know, interest in. I, I, I really haven't tried to marry or partner any other kind of grant programs or, uh, financial assistance to the auction properties. Because again, these are distressed properties. You would think that, that the purchase price is reflective in the time of the auction and that people wouldn't be expecting or feel entitled to a separate grant. Uh, it should be part of, you know, whatever they bid on, on the property. Um, especially competitive grants or things where there might be limited funds. grants or things where there might be limited funds.
Hey, hey, we're kicking that ball out towards that street. Could you mute yourself, Ms. Garrett?
It wasn't Ms. Garrett, but I took care of who it was, ma'am.
I apologize. So, so my other question to you, Mr. Delisle, is this, did the, did this auction allow those bids to get out of control when it came to certain properties? Was that bid, should that bid have went up to $216,000 for that particular property? And you don't have to answer that now, you can answer me in writing, but I, I need to, I need to know that.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel President, can I just ask one quick question?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yeah, I just want to say again, Mr. Delisle, again, you have the access. The people, they do not. You have the knowledge, the people do not. So, if you're interested in selling properties, you're going to get programming, you're going to find it, and you're going to, you know, get investors or people who are willing to create loans and to help people revitalize these properties. So, home improvement loans, a lot of investors out there who want to help or partner in these type of transactions. And I just think that we're not doing enough in the Housing and Economic Development Department to do that. If we don't have those programs, then we have to educate us, we, we have to educate ourselves on them, and we depended on you to do that. So, a, a person coming into the City Hall for any service, I don't care if it's in your department or any other department, if they, we should be asking, ask for it, not because he didn't know to ask, right? So, people don't know what they don't know, but if somebody came to my department and said, you know, I can't do this, blah, 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 and I'd be like, oh, I got something for you. You might, you may qualify for A, B, C, and D. I mean, to let somebody walk away on a house like this and at that price level without even trying, trying to find a way to provide some type of assistance, and we all know money is out there, a lot of equity is out there to be had and want to help revitalize cities and invest in homes and real estate, I, I think that we need to do better there. And we can talk about that another time. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, you may continue with the vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is Resolution 21-179, a resolution amending Resolution 20-671, rescinding the sale of certain property authorized thereby and authorizing the return of the balance of the deposit. I have a motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Counsel President McBride?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes.
Resolution passed, it by a vote of six to one. Next, we have Resolution 21-180, a resolution amending Resolution 18-665, rescinding the sale of certain property authorized thereby and authorizing the return of a deposit. This is for 314 and 316 West Panover Street. Do I have a motion?
So.
A motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison, the floor is open. Ms. Vaughn?
This is, I'm sorry, to, um...
This is a return of the deposit for 314 and 316 West Panover Street. This is, well, the one with the garage, they said the garage.
Oh, oh, yeah, no.
Ms. Vaughn votes no.
They're changing my vote to yes.
Mr. Blakely's changing his vote to yes. Counsel President McBride?
No, I'm going to vote no.
Counsel President McBride votes no. The resolution passed it by a margin of four to three. Next, we have Resolution 21-181, a resolution amending Resolution 20-671, rescinding the sale of certain property authorized thereby and authorizing the return of the balance of the deposit. This is for 900 Indiana Avenue.
I would like to say something on this, Counsel President.
Yes, let the motion go through.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison, the floor is open.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yeah, this, this, this is another, this is another property that has been adversely impacted due to COVID-19 pandemic and illness and continued, the death and illness of immediate family members hindering the purchases' ability to move forward with the purchase and redevelopment of the property. I'm, I'm really, I voted for the last one due to the, the extenuating circumstances, but I have a real problem with this. I mean, I, I just believe that this is going to open up the floodgates and we're going to lose a lot of property. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Sorry, is Counsel Vice President Dunn, I'm sorry?
You've been recognized, ma'am.
Yes. Okay, I will say, I voted no for the last one, because I don't want to set precedent. And I don't want to go down to the free slope and you do some for one and not for the other. And in all fairness, so many people and families have gone through hardship during the pandemic. And, you know, can't pay their rent, can't do this and can't do that. And in all fairness to the Housing and Economic Development Department and all bidders, this information was posted to our website well in advance. Mr. Delisle, I'm just going to ask you a question, is that right? When the bidders came into the auction, they were aware of the properties and what they were interested in, correct?
Counsel, Vice, Counsel President, is...
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman, the, all bidders had access to the same information. It was, you know, in the resolution and on the, on the website, you know, at the, at the time of the auction. One thing I would like to just point out about this resolution, it is the same individual as the previous resolution, right? So, the, it's the same death circumstances and family circumstances, the, the person won two of the properties, and these were two properties that were not the homeowner-restricted properties. So, I don't want anyone to think that they were gaming the system. These were, these were properties that were open and unrestricted for future homeownership. So, I just wanted to add that, make sure that was clear.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I'm glad that you brought it clarity that, because, you know, I looked on the auction site, and I know that, and, and some people contacted me with questions, and I said, I can't answer them because I don't, you know, I don't really know a lot about it, other than that close to the process. But folks cruised around the neighborhood, you know, Googled it on Zillow and all types of stuff. So, I know if I thought that these were not informed, when you participate in an auction, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, it's sort of like the stock market, you know? And the regulatory, the Securities and Exchange Commission says they have different type of investors. They have sophisticated investors, and they have investors like myself who are not sophisticated. And when you delve, delve into risky assets and risky investment, we all know houses like this are risky, they're risky investments. So, these bidders, I believe, were sophisticated real estate buyers. They came in, Mr. Delisle put all the information out there for, for them to see and what the terms of, 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 what the terms were and are, and, and they proceeded. So, I believe these were sophisticated investors, and they knew, and particularly the residents, you know? They walked around, I got people texting me right now, I'm telling you, right now saying, I'm interested in that property. Where's it located? These are Trent residents who are going to drive around to Riverside Avenue right now and look at that property. So, even before they come to auction, they've already looked at it, they walked around there, they rode their bikes around there. So, I have it hard to believe, I find it very hard. So, I'm just being fair here. So, they, they knew what it was going to take to revitalize those houses, because they looked at it before they even put the bid in. So, it is what it is, and I, and I can't, I can't support this. The taxpayers, the people of the city, you engage in, in risky bidding and assets, and I just, and I will say that the city has an op, has an opportunity to search for better programs to help in these situations, but right now, everybody knew what the terms were before they came to the table and offered their bid on these properties. So, I'm going to, I don't have anything else, I'll wait for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collin.
Counsel President?
Counsel President?
Yes, wait a minute, who's, I, I hear someone, is it, who is it, Marge or...
Marge first.
Yeah, yeah.
Marge first in the...
Okay, go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm looking at both of these resolutions, and this gentleman committed to purchases of $544,000, and he works for the city. I wish I was making his salary, but, I mean, I, that, that means he wants both his deposits returned. And, and I, I don't understand, I mean, did we get any financial background on his ability to be able to purchase these homes? Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel President. Counsel Vice President, no, we, we don't collect financial information or prequalify, if you will, bidders prior to the, to the auction. That's just not how it's structured. They're not like a designated developer, for example, where we negotiate a deal or a transaction. We did, you know, collect $1,000 deposits for the ability to bid, to try and weed out folks that might be just speculating, you know, but we don't collect, you know, financial information or capacity, you know, ahead of time. It's just not how the auctions are structured.
So, Mr. Delisle, $544,000 is a hefty amount of money, and, you know, this sounds like a flip it deal to me, fix them and flip them. I ju, I just wanted to know, and I asked that before, if we, something of this extent, you would think that we would, we would be able to see some sort of financial background as to how they're going to be able to afford these properties. Thank you.
Counsel President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
Okay, Mr. Delisle, you said that the people, his family members died of COVID, right?
Counsel President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel President. Yes, Councilman, that's correct.
Right, because COVID-19 was like shut down only Trenton, New Jersey, but the world. So, I have compassion for people who lose their, lose their loved ones, and this could be put back on the auction, right? The next auction?
Yes, Councilman, and that, that's part of the reason why we want to bring this to counsel, you know, now. As you saw in the previous ones, they're outstanding for many years and looking to cancel these things more quickly so we can put them back on the auction or find some other way to dispose of them and make them productive assets for the city, but not to have this kind of contract kind of hanging out there. We're looking to, to cancel it, you know, retain the small deposit in, in the fee and move on.
Right, thank, thank you, Mr. Delisle.
All right, Mr. Collin, you may continue with the vote.
Yes, ma'am. We have a motion by Mr. Blakely, a second by Mr. Harrison. Mr. Blakely, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Counsel President McBride?
No.
Resolution fails, but I voted two to five, by your vote of five to two, with five being against. Next, we have Resolution 21-184, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Yunusi Group Inc. for demolitions of various structures and neighborhood redevelopment and revitalization program for a period of one year from May 15, 2021 to May 14, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $229,000 through bid 2021-11. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Collin, give me the number of the resolution again, please.
Yes, ma'am, it's Resolution 21-184. It's under the Housing and Economic Development.
Okay.
About one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight down the docket. Uh, no, my, my apologies, seven, seven down from, from the apartment heading.
It's 184?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Uh, Ms. Vaughn, did you make the motion?
Yeah, I did.
Go right ahead.
Because...
And do I have a second?
Yeah, I'm looking at the supporting...
I, I need a second first, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Uh, do I have a second?
I second.
Second.
I have a second by Counsel President McBride.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn.
So, this resolution to, to do the renovations on those properties, and those are in the, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, demolitions on, on those various structures. And the reason why I have concern about a couple of them, because particularly one on Hart Avenue, 102 and 104 Hart Avenue, Mr. Delisle, can you, um, answer, because we have a couple of houses over there that's under redevelopment, correct?
I, I believe that's true.
Okay, and we had approved that whole block, because there's only a Hart Avenue, if I remember, there's one side of the street, that's where the cemetery is, the local street cemetery, and then the other side is all sort of like townhomes, correct? So, 104 and 102 Hart Avenue, and then you had the three that was under, I think, one of the nonprofit organizations, New Jersey Community Capital, got a grant to renovate 74, 76, and 82 Hart Avenue. Now, if we tear this down, and this is the thing that I have a question about, is, are we planning a, do we have a comprehensive redevelopment plan around this neighborhood? Because these streets are all sort of together, North Clinton Avenue, Hart Avenue, Tyrell Avenue, right? That, they're in the redevelopment zone. So, when, when, when we voted for that resolution to give New Jersey Community Capital that grant to do 74, 76, and 82 Hart Avenue, which I don't even think they started the job yet, did they? Mr. Delisle, did they start redeveloping those three properties on Hart Avenue?
Counsel President, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, I, I honestly can't tell you what the status of that project is. We didn't give them a grant, we executed a redevelopment agreement for them to rehabilitate the properties.
Okay.
So, I don't know where they're at with the rest of their funding or to do that work. Offhand, Councilwoman, I can certainly find out for you.
No, no, but I must say, the redevelopment, that was, you only get, what, 121 days? When we designate a redevelopment, it's only for a short period of time, right?
No, Councilwoman, that, I believe what you're referring to is a period between when we, when counsel designates them as developer and a time period to negotiate an agreement to come back to counsel with the final form of the agreement. It's just so we have a time period to negotiate. That could be, you know, extended or, or renewed, but again, that's, that's not a time period to complete the work, but a time period for us to put the agreement together, just so it's not open-ended for, you know, an extended or indefinite period of time.
Yeah, so, so the reason why I ask that, because I remember that, because I take an interest in that neighborhood because, in that block, because we also have a big project by one of our residents about the cemetery that's across the street, the local cemetery. And that block, now, you're going to do demolitions of two of the units there, because everything is sort of like a, a road, you know, they're attached. So, how are you going to, how are they going to, how are you going to demolish 102 and 104 and leave up 74, 76, and 82? And this is where, I don't understand, when we come up with a redevelopment plan for a block that's that small, Hart Avenue is very small, and now all the houses are, you know, attached. So, in one breath, you're going in, in my opinion, a redevelopment plan for that street should be, all those houses should be knocked down, right? And beautiful homes should be redeveloped. But to go in a, in an area and do redevelopment and piecemeal like we're doing... But to go in a, in an area and do redevelopment and piecemeal like we're doing, 102 and 104 Hart Avenue, you're gonna demolish that? Did you see 74, 76, and 82 Hart? They need to be taken down too. So I don't understand what that nonprofit organization is doing. It sounds like to me that we don't have a development, a redevelopment plan for that area, and we have to, because that's a redevelopment zone.
So, Counsel President, if I may?
Go right ahead.
Councilwoman, we do have a redevelopment plan. That's why it's in a redevelopment area. Now, as you know, there are, yes, Trenton has many attached houses, whether they're row or semis, where one half is in deplorable condition and needs to be taken down, and another, uh, is fixed up. To take a heavy-handed approach to redevelopment, as you're suggesting on Hart Avenue, would be to acquire private property and displace, uh, current residents. These particular properties are city-owned. They're in a condition that is, is beyond, uh, repair or certainly financially feasible repair, and that's why we've opted to tear them down. Once they're torn down, it can create that opportunity for new development and create some, some infill housing, uh, opportunities. And yes, it is, it is across from, from the cemetery and, and the, the project that you're referring to, uh, I believe with the, the Six Card Regiment and the, the museum there. Um, and, and certainly addressing vacant, uh, and blighted buildings in the neighborhood will help promote that project. It'll create opportunity for new growth, new development with the, with the vacant lots that are there. I believe this will be contiguous with other vacant lots there to make for a better project. So I, I don't feel that, that taking these down is really, uh, disharmonious with the, the rehabilitation of other properties several doors down.
Well, okay, again, I don't know if you went on Hart Avenue, but if you're gonna take down 102 and 104, and you're gonna, and, and, and address 74, 76, and 82 remain, and they, they're public, well, they're public property too, right? Because we gave it, like you said, you identified, we gave it to the New Jersey, um, community, was, Community Capital. And, 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 and the last time I looked over there, they haven't moved on anything. So, again.
They're not moving because you're shutting shit down.
No, let me tell you, what, I mean, I, you know, I don't, Mr. Collin, whoever that was, was rude.
I'm, I'm trying to find them, ma'am. I'm, I apologize.
And, no, uh, and, and what I want to avoid, Mr. Um, Delisle, is that, and the reason why I bring it up, and I remember, and you're not gonna come, people are not gonna come here in Trenton and say they're gonna work on projects. It's like 74, 76, and 82 Hart Avenue and do nothing. And use our city to put our name on a, on a grant application and say that's what they're doing to get the money and then never do the project. So I am telling you, that's why 74, 76, and 82 Hart Avenue haven't been done. So now, our housing economic development department, 102 and 104, then I appreciate your efforts there, but when, next time when we designate a nonprofit organization who think they can use our city's good name to solidify them a grant and don't use that money for that purpose, because they know the federal government ain't gonna come back and do an audit of them, that, you know, that, that is not gonna, that's not gonna fly here anymore, so long as I'm on this council. So I may have to report organizations and nonprofit organizations who, who execute that type of strategy, using inner cities to put on their grant applications, but don't use that grant money for the purposes that they say that we're gonna do. So don't come here playing with me with that crap. So Mr., so Counsel President McBride, I'm done, but Mr. Uh, Delisle, I understand, but you should go back to me. Do me a favor, Mr. Delisle. Find out what the status is of 74, 76, and 82 Hart Avenue, okay? Can you do that for me?
I, I'd be happy to, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Mr. Collin, you may continue with the vote.
Yes, ma'am. I have an introduction by Councilwoman Vaughn and a second by Counsel President McBride. I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Counsel President McBride?
No.
So ordered. Uh, Resolution passes by a vote of six to one. Next, we have Resolution 21-185, a resolution authorizing a change order to the contract with Chio's Construction Corp. for bid 2020-45 renovation of the Sam Naples Center, 611 Chestnut Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Let's, uh.
21-185, ma'am.
Still move.
I'm voting. Well, Wilson, I have a second by Mr. Blakely. This is for Chio's Construction, Counsel President.
Mm, gotcha. Okay, so, um, okay, so, um, did you get your, did, did we move the motion?
Yes, ma'am, we have a motion by Ms. Paula Wilson, a second by Mr. Blakely.
All righty, so I wanted to talk about 21-185. So the first, um, the first, uh, uh, bid for that, uh, job was 139, 990. So they said that that bid was rejected because of fatal flaws, but I don't see, uh, I didn't get any, uh, background information to the fatal flaws. So I just wanted to, uh, say this to the, um, to the procurement officer and to Mr. Delisle and to our, uh, Mrs. Stevenson, the engineer for Trenton. We have a resolution here, and the original bid for this particular resolution was 189,450. And, um, when you, when they finish with their change order, it comes up to 895,000. So, this particular contr- uh, construction corporation, this is the first time I think we, we've done business with them. My suggestion to, uh, the Director of Housing and Economics and to the, uh, Public Works Director, as far as our engineer, Mr. Stevenson, and for our procure, procurement officer, Isabella Bercia. When we are putting together the scope of the work, there's, there automatically has to be a code official to go in or there automatically has to be someone in inspections that could go through that particular facility to help with the scope of the work. Because when you go down this list of all of the bids that came in and you start taking on these change orders, you have yourself a problem. This particular, uh, construction corporation, this is their first time doing business with us, and I just would like to send a message to them that this is the first time you've done business with us. And I hope it's not the last, based on your lowballing your bids. Because it will not be tolerated under this council. You have to bid for the project, and as far as all of these unseen things that are taking place, oh, they went into the roof and all the beams were decayed. Or the roof was already collapsing. So, not for this particular resolution, I'm not talking about the roof, but I'm just talking about the, the presentation. So, s- somebody in our administration between the procurement officer and the engineer and the code official, along with the Director of Housing, should and has to do a better job with the scope of the work that these contractors are bidding on, because the change orders is just not, was, uh, is not happening. This particular change order, um, exceeded the lowest bidder, but they said that the lowest bidder had some serious flaws, but I don't have a list of what those serious flaws were. And the second, uh, bidder was, uh, Levi, and his bid was 263,000. Not that that makes it any better, because we'll deal with Levi next. But I'm just saying to the director, to the procurement officer, to the engineer for the City of Trenton, to our code officials in our city, we have to do a better job with the scope of the work. And the message that I would like to get out to all of the contractors, the, uh, construction corporations, is that you have to bid on the project and, and you have to finish the work under that bid. Thank you, Mr. Collin. Um, if no one else has anything to say, we could just move for the vote.
Counsel President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, regarding these senior centers, when they open up the walls, that's where you could see, uh, other problems that might arise. I mean, Mr. Mr. Delisle gave us a demonstration on Tuesday night about issues of locations, different locations.
I, I looked at the presentation, Councilman, and that's why I just was, uh, very clear in the messaging stating that we have a code official under our inspection department. We have an engineer and our public works department, and we have the, um, the procurement officer that should be working with both of those individuals when we are putting out the scope of the work. You cannot put out and, and come back later and say, all of these things are unforeseen, because they're not. That is why we pay top dollar for our code officials. That is why we pay top dollar for our directors. They must do a better job than this.
Yeah, but until you, uh, Counsel President, until you rip open the walls, you will not know how bad the damage is truly gonna be.
That's what engineers are for, Councilman. I, I disagree with you on that, but, you know, I, I understand what you're saying.
Uh, Counsel President?
Um, Councilman Harrison, Councilman Harrison, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Well, you know, um, you were out on Tuesday, but I brought up the same concerns that you just articulated. And, um, I agree 100% that when you have these professionals and these contractors come in, and they are professionals, they, this is their, this is what they do. They take, they have their team too, who come out and review jobs. They're not amateurs at this. They're not, oh, when I open up the wall type thing. Uh, that's a joke, okay? If you're, if you're a professional contractor, a builder, you know from experience that when you open up those walls, you know what you, in, in the worst case, you know what it's gonna be. And in the worst-case scenario, that's what you're gonna put in your, uh, 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 um, that's how you're gonna cost your job. So I know that these engineers, even on the contractor side, they know how to cost the work when they come look at jobs such as these. So they need to stop with their junk. And in to Counsel President's point, our, our, our side of the equation, our engineers need to go out and make sure that the, 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 they should review those cost estimates accordingly. So, and that's, that's all I have to say, Counsel President.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, you may continue with the vote.
Yes, ma'am, we have Resolution 21-185. We have an introduction by Ms. Paula Wilson, a second by Mr. Blakely. I'll now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Counsel President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to ten. Next, we have Resolution 21-186, a resolution authorizing change order number three to the contract with Levy Construction Company Inc. for bid 2020-49 renovation of the Reading Senior Recreation Center, 15 Ringgold Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Um, can you say a resolution number again?
21-186, ma'am.
Still move. Still move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Paula Wilson.
Okay, so, Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to point this out to my colleagues, where it comes to Levi Construction, and I would like for, because Mr. Uh, Delisle should have this information. So I would just like to first say, I'm not gonna repeat myself, the same thing goes for Levi, but the difference between Levi and Chio's Construction Company is that Levi has been doing business with the City of Trenton since 08. And since that time, Levi has had a process of change orders. Uh, 9258 was a change order, 18-659, change order, 19-563, change order. And this particular, and 21-097?
Yes, ma'am.
Was a change order too. So I just want to be real clear here. Levi Construction Company has been doing business with the City of Trenton since 08. And in that time, I can count the times that Levi has underbidded projects. I've already told you, 92-58 was a change order, 18-659 was a change order, 19-563 was a change order, and 21-092. Now Levi's original bid was 651,600. Uh, the, uh, the, with all of the change orders, 673, uh, uh, a thousand. The next, the, the closest bidder to them in the original bid was Helios, 677,000. So I'm telling you, there should be some type of mechanism in place. Some type of red flag should have went up to the procurement officer, to Mr. Delisle. These companies are bidding, low bidding these projects, and I don't care about the unforeseen, because if the code officer did their job, if the engineers did their jobs, they would know exactly what they're doing. And I am saying, Levi doing business with us since 08, and all of these change orders, this is common practice. And somebody need to look into it, because it's happening a little too frequently. I, I, there's no way that I can support this, not at all. So, um.
Uh, Counsel President McBride?
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn.
I concur again. There's no way I can support it. I, I'm looking at the supporting documentation from, I believe, uh, Farad G., a grant administrator, CDBG ESG Home. Um, so, you know, when it comes to the grant money that comes from the federal government to support our projects and programs and services in the city, it seems to me, uh, just an observation, and from what Counsel President just, you know, affirmed, that some companies been with the city for a long time, and they know certain projects that are funded by the big Uncle Sam, federal government. So anywhere it's federal government money, everybody comes to the table and think they can get what they can get. Okay? But our CDB, our CDBG grant money needs to be used effectively and efficiently, and it should be managed accordingly, uh, Mr. Delisle. So I'm looking at this resolution, and it says, the Reading Senior City, Senior, Senior, Senior Citizen, oh God, Senior Center Improvements Project. And that this company went to Clark, Canton, and Heinz, CCH, which is another organization that's been with the city for many, many years. So they wrote to Ms. G. They said, there, Mrs. G., Clark, Clark, Canton, and Heinz has reviewed the following change or- has reviewed the following changes order request for the Reading Senior Citizen Improvement Project. Values appear fair and reasonable. We recommend approval." Change order, and this is a letter written to our Housing Economic Development, CDBG Grant Manager. And it says, "Change order request four. Remove and relocate existing HVAC controls. Modify existing plumbing. Cleanout location as means to facilitate the installation of the new limited-use, limited-application elevator. Conflicts between the elevator and existing mechanical controls and plumbing cleanout were not readily observable until the contractor demolished the related work and conditions were exposed. The relocation of these items were required." So here we are. The HVAC and air conditioning system, supposedly the contract said, there was a conflict between the elevator and the existing mechanical controls. And the plumbing cleanout were not readily observable until the contractor demolished and blah, blah, blah. So, yeah, HVAC system, air conditioning is, has a big plumbing component. I know that because I put the air conditioning system in my home. And I know that there ain't no way that this could, this could not have been known by a plumber or the contractor. That makes no sense to me. And then the second part says, "Provide and install elevator shaft hoist beam as a means to facilitate the installation of the limited-use, limited-application elevator." The hoist beam was not part of the contract documentation or general contractor's bid, but is required for the elevator. Really? They didn't know that a shaft, a hoist beam, needed to be in the shaft of the elevator? So this is, I mean, somebody needs to review this. And quite frankly, what I would want to see happen, instead of us voting this down, I would want our engineer and our folks to review it again and perhaps come back and vote on it next council session. Because, you know, we're, I mean, since CCH, since Levy Construction saw it fit to go to CCH to get a review and send a Farid G. to get more money, to shake her down for more cash. And it is a shakedown. And that's right, I said it, it's a shakedown. So have them, have our engineers review this and let them tell us that the hoist beam was eliminated from the original scope. Okay? So can we, I'm going to propose to table this until we get more information. Counsel President?
I have a motion to table by Counsel Member Vaughn. Do I have a second to the motion to table?
I have a second.
I have a second by Counsel President McBride. I'll call the roll. This is the table until the next council meeting for engineering review to, I guess, ma'am, we just have to back up with the assertions aren't here?
Correct.
Okay, so table to the next meeting for engineering review. You say that these were not foreseeable. I'll call the roll on this, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes to table. Ms. Colwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson votes to table, Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Harrison votes no to table. Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Michelle votes no to table. Councilman Rodriguez, this is to vote to table?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes to table. Counsel President McBride?
Yes.
Counsel President McBride votes to table. This is table till the next meeting, which is May twenty-seventh. If Mr. Delisle can get the engineers, or Adam, if you can get the engineers to take a look at the excuses and get them to send the report to my office or a letter to my office to greatly appreciate it. Counsel President, would you like me to move on to the next item?
Yes, please.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-seven, a resolution authorizing change order number seven to the contract with Skizari Builders, Inc., forbid twenty-twenty dash forty-seven renovation of the North Clinton Recreation Center, four-five-four North Clinton Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell-Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Harrison.
Counsel President?
Yes, go right ahead, Counselwoman.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Delisle. The roof and the eaves on this building, this office, whatever, were rotted out. Water was pouring into that building. How did we not know when we sent out the RFP with all that water damage through the years that all those beams and behind the walls and on the ceiling were rotten? How did we not know that, Mr. Delisle?
Counsel President, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead.
Counselwoman, you know, these plans and specifications were prepared two years or better ago. And, you know, when I came, this project was already in the works. I think, you know, then we, as you know, we waited some time for our CDBG money to be unfrozen or made available. We didn't, you know, reconsider or reopen the drawings. We went with the project the way it was. I think that the building had continued to deteriorate from the time that the plans and specifications were put together. I think we limited, or were trying to be judicious with the money that we had or what we thought we had available at the time. And I think that, as you saw in the pictures from my presentation before, these areas were not visible. This was all behind studs and sheet rock and everything else.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
I know they weren't visible, but it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that when water has been pouring in a building for several years, that it's going to damage the wood, behind the walls, above the walls. I mean, why didn't they, why didn't they redo this? Why didn't they redo this bit? And check that out. I mean, it's come, I've drive by that Recreation Center, been driving by it for years. And I've even gone in it, and I've seen the damage. We had to close it up one year for a boarding place because the electricity kept going out, and there was mold and everything else. So I don't understand how we could just be so slipshod with this. And I don't care about the reasons that the walls were up. Because if I have a damage on my roof, and I have had it because I bought this house and it was a mess, the water damaged a lot of support in my house.
Counselwoman, I think the answer is just that the damage was more extensive than we had suspected. And rather than overestimate and maybe overpay with overestimating the amount of damage, the engineers or the consultants, the architects, made their best efforts to prepare the specifications. And we got a bid and price based on those specifications. And the work that is found to be extra was work that was not identified on those specifications, and we never paid for. So it's not that...
Mr. Delisle, when we put our bids, please don't undercut ourselves. If we can't afford it, we can't afford it. But don't undercut it because we end up paying through the nose with all these change orders. It ends up costing as much as it would be if we redid the RFP to replace all of that. We know those buildings are all old. That community center has been closed down since after 2010. It hasn't been used. Thank you.
Counsel President?
Yes, I would like to just ask the Law Department a question before you sign in, Counselwoman. Mrs. Samuels?
Yes, Counsel President, I'm here.
So if the original bid was seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, and with all of the change orders, the bid is equaling up to, I mean, the project is equaling up to eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, four hundred, four hundred thirteen. And the second highest bidder for this project was eight hundred and twenty thousand. Is that legal, that your change orders exceeds the second original bid? Is that, is that normal?
Counsel President, thank you for the question. And although I have not done research on it, based on what I do know, once a bid or a contract has been awarded, you know, pursuant to the lowest bid or the acceptance of the lowest bid, then you're in that contract. And unfortunately, you know, though the change orders may, you know, if there are change orders, amount to a number that's larger than what this, you know, the second, the second lowest bid was. Because you've already extended that contract, we can't cancel that contract with the present. We are unable to cancel that contract with the initial awardee of the bid.
No, no, no. I want to know if there is anything abnormal about it. Is there anything in the contract in law where they bid and then the change order supersedes the original bid, the second highest bidder, the second lowest bidder? I'm just trying to find out what the law says.
And so as I indicated when I started out, because I haven't done the research, I can't specify exactly what the law says with regard to change orders right now. But what I was trying to indicate is that because we are in, working pursuant to a contract, and there are contract provisions with this particular contractor, unless there, you know, is a breach of that contract, we have to proceed under that contract. And if there are change orders, I believe that we do have to, you know, sort of acknowledge them and provide them to council for approval. But as to the specifics, as to, you know, whether, you know, once it starts to exceed a certain number, I don't know that, and I'd have to do that research, or the Law Department would have to do that research and provide that research to the council at a later time.
All righty, thank you so much.
You're welcome, Counsel President.
Counsel President?
Yes.
Counsel President?
Yes, Counselwoman Vaughn?
Yes. Woo, this is, so, I just want to ask Ben Delisle again because I'm reading the supporting documentation. And it's just one, again, it came, attention, Ben Nicholson. Okay, it came from, again, Clark, Canton, and Heinz. You know, at the end of the day, a change request, why is it, why is it going to Clark, Canton, and Heinz? Why isn't it going to our engineers, our city engineers? And who is it? Hogarth and whoever else are structural engineers in the city? Mr. Delisle, I think, you know, at least for review, right? So I don't think, you know, I'm sure Farid G. does a good job in a lot of things, but for these type of professionals to be sending these change orders to her for approval without the council getting or your department getting a check from our own engineers, I mean, shouldn't we have that, Mr. Delisle?
Counsel President, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you. Counselwoman, the architects at CCH are our project design professionals and our consultants for this project and act as our construction managers. They are familiar with the scope of work and are the ones that review the work for completeness and sign off on the applications for payment and review the change orders. As you may know, we do not have a licensed architect in the employ of the city of Trenton. And, you know, I don't want to speak to the professional licenses of anyone in the Public Works Department, but I am certainly unaware that there's anyone that is a structural engineer or a PE. So we rely on our design professionals, our consultants, in this case, CCH, to do that professional work for us. That is why the request went to them and that they reviewed it and they made a recommendation.
Okay, well, um, I don't, well, I'm unclear then, that the city, so when you give out COs to, on a structure of newly-built home in the city, you don't use Clark, Canton, and Heinz, do you, sir?
No.
Okay, so who in the city goes out and makes sure that the structure is habitable? That the CO can be given for new buildings that are built in the city? If we don't have, you just said that we don't have that expertise in-house. So how are you giving out COs in the city? If we don't have that expertise in-house to examine sheet rock and firewalls and structural, you know, roofing and all those type of things?
Counsel President, if I may?
Yes.
With regard to new construction, our subcode officials review it for conformance with the UCC and state law and our own city codes. They are not engineers, nor are they architects. They receive plans signed and sealed by professional engineers and architects whose license states that the plans are done in accordance with applicable codes and their licensing. We enforce the codes and rely on those professionals and their seals. But we don't review them as architects or as engineers.
No, no, wait a minute. Architects, okay, so I'm going to go back up again. So again, Clark, Canton, and Heinz, they work on these type of projects. But I'm saying that on city public property and projects at City Hall, because Mr. Delisle, I've done, I've gone through a building a review by the city. And I know that there are experts in the city. I don't know what their licenses are, but they can come out and review rather, like in this particular case, Clark, Canton, and Heinz said that there's a change order request to remove and replace a pilaster. A pilaster. And that's eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Now, that's a change request to remove and replace a pilaster. Now, Mr. Delisle, do you know what a pilaster is? It's a fancy word. But you know what a pilaster is, right?
I do.
Okay? So I'm telling you, that is just a beam, sir. A beam, a pillar, a beam. So you mean to tell me that, that you need to, that Clark, well, if Clark, Canton, and Heinz reviewed the original order of this project and the contractor missed out the beam, then we need to get rid of Clark, Canton, and Heinz. Okay? So, because if a contractor is telling me that, oh, we forgot to put in the order for the beam, and that's all what a pilaster is, a beam. Everybody knows that, you know, structures have to be held up by a beam. A beam is just a wooden, everybody know what that is.
Counsel President?
It's a two-by-four, a two-by-four freaking thing that you go to the lumberyard to get, to hold up a wall, to hold up a ceiling. And that's what they say here. For eight thousand dollars, change order request to remove and replace a pillar, a beam, a pilaster, a beam. So if...
Counselwoman, Counselwoman?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may? And I know you were not able to join us for my presentation earlier on Tuesday evening, but you received it subsequently.
Yes, I did.
And you'll see very clearly the pictures of the masonry, the brick pilaster that was damaged and buckled and been shifted, you know, six, over six inches. That was behind a sheet rock wall. And that is, and you need to take that down to the ground and rebuild it in its entirety. This is not a two-by-four. Counselwoman?
No, let me explain to you. Everybody knows, engineer, like I said, Clark, Canton, and Heinz, they knew that was there. Okay? You know what the supporting walls are when you come in there. An architect knows that. That's what you, when you, when you want to do a renovation, that's the first thing they look at. They try, they find the supporting beams and walls. So I'm telling you, I saw your presentation, Mr. Delisle. And that's why I turned to this page. And for eight thousand dollars, no. And if they didn't know that when they went in there, like I said, Clark, Canton, and Heinz, they themselves need to be fired.
So, Mr. Conlon, may we continue with the vote?
Madam President, I have a quick question.
Yes, go right ahead, Counselman Rodriguez.
If we approve this change order, Mr. Delisle, is that building going to be ready for our seniors to go there soon? You know, with us? The way it's going, it looks like it's going to take forever. But if that, that's all it takes, right? Everything has been approved by the inspectors, by everything else is done, right, in that building?
Counsel President, if I may? Council, Council President, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, this, we're speaking of the North Clinton Recreation Center. Um, I, I can say for certainty that if we don't approve this change order, it will never be ready because this work is impeding the, the completion of the contract work. You can't finish the walls unless you do the structural work, right? Or if you don't repair things that were rotten and, and repair underneath. And I can also say, a lot of this work, you know, it, it has been inspected, it is part, uh, there are building permits for it. Councilman, if I could, there are building permits.
But I heard that before. I, oh, yes or no? Is it? That's it? That's all is needed? This change order? You know, my vote depends on this, you know? Tell me yes or no. I don't, I, I've been listening here for about forty-five minutes with the same subject.
Councilman, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question. Is, is this change order necessary? Yes?
I'm not saying that. My question was, if we approve this change order, that's all is needed to complete the whole project, the building is gonna be ready for our seniors, citizens to go and have their activities inside there as soon as this, uh, change order is completed or whatever?
Council, Councilman, to the best of my knowledge, this is the only or the last change order for this particular building or for this project. But I, I mean, I can't.
Is the building, eh, 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 this building have been, uh, occupied for, what, eleven years? You know, so you are sure that your inspector store you, that all they do is change that wall, whatever is have to be done, and the building is gonna be ready for usage?
Councilman, to the best of my knowledge, yes. And what I can certainly pledge to you is I will, um, make sure to keep in better, in close contact with the inspectors and the contractor and advise you of the progress as it moves forward.
I have no other comment.
Alrighty. So, Mr. Collin, I just wanna say this and put this on the record. For every building in the city of Trenton, there is a blueprint in our engineer department. For every house that was ever built, every brick that was laid to the ground, for a house, apartment, a store, or whatever, there is a blueprint in the engineer's department. So for someone to say, this was not foreseen and that was not foreseen, when you have blueprints for every building in our city, I just can't buy that. But, Mr. Collin, would you move on with the vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion by Council Vice President Cole Wilson and a second by Mr. Harrison. I'll call the roll now. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cole Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Thank you. Ms. President.
No.
Thank you. Resolution carries by a motion of five to two. Um, that is it for the resolutions. Uh, we do have an ordinance for introduction, but I actually have a procedural question off of the law department. If I could ask your indulgence, Council President?
Is it, yes, is it pertaining to the docket?
Yeah, it's actually pertaining to this ordinance. Uh, I have, uh, I have two questions. One, uh, this is for, uh, Mrs. Linsky put this up, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Cruz. Uh, did the planning board actually see this? Cause it is a capital improvement ordinance?
Uh, Mr. Collin, um, it's, it, it's, it's a capital improvement. Do, do you wanna know if the, if, if, if DCA took a look at it?
No, no, no. The planning board, capital improvement, uh, ordinance is required referral out to the planning board just for their approval afterwards. And I just didn't know if you guys, something, a lot of times, uh, before you run an ordinance for capital improvement, you actually run it to the planning board first, just to cut that timeframe down. And I didn't know if you all did that. There's an easy out around that. But, you know, it, 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 I just needed, I just wanted to know if that actually was done in the process.
Uh, the planning board does not review capital improvements.
Yeah, it's actually a requirement under the municipal land use law, but I'd, I'd rather, you know, I'll take that up with, uh, Mr. Bridges or, or Mr. Samuel. Um, but according to my procedures, I actually have, I have to refer this out to the planning board afterwards. And that's what I wanted to talk to you about. Also, the advertising requirements for the May twenty-eighth, so, meetings are gonna be really tight because I have to advertise him for ten days. So.
So, Mr. Collin, if, if.
Let, let me finish one second. Let me just finish one second. So even if I advertise, even if I sent this out for advertisement tomorrow, the earliest I'd be able to get it advertised would be on Monday, which is the eighteenth. If it doesn't give me the ten full days I need for the advertisement. So what I meant, my question is, is it a problem if we move public hearing to June tenth, which would be the next public council meeting after that?
Mr. Collin, this is actually a, a grant to repair a road that we have never, in the history of the municipality that I worked, we have never gone to a planning board to accept grant funds for the repair of a road.
Well, but it, the ordinance doesn't say it's a grant. It says it's a capital improvement ordinance. So I can't take it. It's not an ordinance accepting it. You would accept a grant by a resolution. You're actually, my reading of this, and that's why I actually asked for a minute, just so we could follow the procedures according to municipal land use law, is my reading of this is this is actually a capital improvement ordinance with a conditional payment by the grant. But if somehow the grant were to fall through, you would actually have to take capital funds out of the papers. Accordingly, the way it's written in the ordinance actually does say, this is a capital improvement ordinance, and I have to follow the procedures for capital, you see, uh, capital improvement ordinance is under the municipal land use law. If it is, that's actually what my question is, is to Sally Samuel, is this actually qualify as a capital improvement ordinance? And my concern is, yes, if the grant falls through, you actually have to take this out of capital funds. And that's, that's, that's where I think the capital improvement part comes in. But when, when I actually see the verbiage in the ordinance that says it's a capital improvement ordinance, and I have my advertising requirements that I know I have to meet for capital improvement ordinance, but I also in my procedures and polls that I have to, do have to refer it out to the planning board just for their quick review. That's why, only because the verbiage of the ordinance actually does say, that's why I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah. So, so, Mr. Clerk, the reason why it's called a capital improvement is because we, the, the state DOT is requesting, requires all five hundred and sixty-five municipal entities in the state of New Jersey to adopt an ordinance saying that the city will carve out capital funding for this grant. Once the money becomes available, once the, the award is made, seventy-five percent of it is given to the city, but it is not a, a, uh, um, it, this is only to accept the grant.
I, I get that. I, I get that.
Excuse me, I need to interject into here. Um, Mrs. Samuel, could you come and bring some clarity, please?
And, and, Mr. Collin, why didn't you not bring this up to our attention when, when this, uh, ordinance first came to you and you're bringing it to the meeting now? I mean, you and I have had conversation for the last couple of days and you didn't bring this up. This is, uh, this is like incredible.
Okay, it's not, uh, it, it.
Excuse me, gentlemen, gentlemen, could Mrs. Samuel, please try to help us out here? Mrs. Samuel?
Um, thank you, Council President. Um, I, I, unfortunately, I don't know the answer directly to this question. Um, I, I was, it was also my understanding that if it was.
Someone needs to mute.
Go ahead, Ms. Samuel.
Thank you so much, um, um, Mr. Clerk. Um, I, it was also my understanding that if it was a grant, that it didn't need to go before the planning board, but, um, Mr. Collin did bring up the municipal land use law, which I just, I was taking notes as, as the, uh, conversation was, was being, um, had now. And, and, and it, I would really need to take a look at that. Um, and, and maybe, maybe it is just a format that is in and that's what's causing the confusion. Um, I, I'm not really a hundred percent sure.
And, and, and I just wanted, once again, to raise.
Mr. Collin, please, Ms. Mrs. Samuel, let me ask you this question. Do, um, would it be best for us to table this for the administration to pull it, you guys get the language formatted correctly and then bring it back? Would, would that be the best thing to do?
Well, there's a quick fix. I just wanna, I wanna put it on the table and that's why I raised it. And I, I, I didn't, I, today when I did some more research, that's actually when it came up, because I was looking at what the advertising requirements would be after the meeting. And that's why I actually didn't bring it up on Tuesday, Adam, because I was looking at the advertising requirements today. I'm not trying to ambush anybody or bring up anything or cause any controversy. But when I looked at the advertising requirements for the capital improvement ordinances, which this says that it is, those requirements require referral out to the planning board for a planning board report. And that's the only reason why I raised it. Now, that being said, we don't actually have to go to the planning board because at final adoption, what you can do is you can run a resolution that says, we adopted this anyway, even though we didn't go to the planning board because, and that's where you should put something in. And I'm just bringing this up now. The other thing is the advertising requirement does require ten days and I don't, I'm not gonna, no matter what, I'm not gonna make the ten days because I can't put it in the paper before it's passed. And if, even if I put it in tomorrow, it's not gonna make it till Monday and I won't have ten days for the capital improvement ordinance. So I just wanna make it clear that the public hearing will be for June tenth and not for May twenty-seventh because of the advertising requirement. And also to ask that additional question about the capital improvement language. And if that's the case, we don't actually have to do it, refer out to the planning board. The way around that is compliance with the law would be done by running a resolution that says, yes, we realize we should, you know, we could have gone to the planning board. We did not go to the planning board for this reason. And the reason would be because it's a DOT grant, it's not really a special capital improvement, and we're just going along with the terms and conditions of the grant. That's all I'm putting on the table. That's really correct. Thank you.
Ms. Samuel?
Yes, Council President McBride?
There's something I ask you to do with the guy in front here?
Um, I, I, you know, I wanna, I want to tend to agree right now with, with the clerk in that, as I was indicating, it's my understanding that if it's a grant, that it's something that doesn't have to be referred to the planning board. But in the event that this should have gone to the planning board and we can fix it by adopting a resolution as stated, then I, I would, I, you know, I, I would say that that's what probably the, the council should do. But I don't know that for sure, having not done the research and having not looked at the law myself. The clerk has the benefit of having done that. Maybe if this was brought to my attention earlier today, I could have done that as well. But having not had the opportunity to do so, I can't say for certain.
Who, who signed off on legality of this?
Well, it, it, it would be Wes, and it is legal as to form and legality in, in general. It's just that on the back end for the second hearing, we would have to run that procedural to, or either cover the procedural by referring to the planning board or run that resolution. And that's all I'm putting on the table. It's just a procedural issue that I came across late this afternoon. And I'm sorry, I didn't get, it was, it was, I was getting the advertisement.
I gotta fix it, please.
Okay.
How do we, how do we make it right?
Well, like I said, just on the back end, on the second hearing, we just have to run that resolution saying it wasn't referred to the planning board for this reason. And once again, the reason why I raised it is because the ordinance does say this is a capital improvement ordinance. And, uh, yeah, if it says it, it probably should go according with those procedures. And that's all I'm, that's all I'm bringing up, just trying to do my job as a clerk, so.
Right, but, 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 but that, that is why I, that is why I'm saying that I believe that the wording should be, should be correct and should be, uh, a, a, a bit clear so that everybody will be on the same page.
Right. And I think, I think what Adam said was DOT actually gave them the wording for this. So, and that the other cities ran this exactly like that. I just, you know, and I, uh, just, I get that. And that, that's not, I just wanna make, once again, there's a procedural thing on the back end that requires either one or the other. I just wanna put that on the table and let everybody know that that's what I found this afternoon. So, uh, you can run it now, you can introduce it now. And if there is a procedural issue, you can table it at the public hearing to correct that at that time as well. So it's not a problem running it tonight. And that's not what I was saying. I was just putting it on the table. For one, the public hearing should be set for June tenth. And two, you know, at that public hearing, we're going to have another procedural resolution that, that should accompany this. That's, that being said, do I have a, a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Some.
I have a motion by Ms. Cole Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Harrison.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I want to, I, I, I appreciate Mr. Collin's due diligence. And, um, and I, and I rather, you know, as they say, measure, you know, measure once, measure twice. So I think we should go with his recommendation. We should proceed, but then introduce that resolution to acknowledge that we don't need to go to the planning board, where the reasons why we're not going to the planning board wasn't necessary. So I believe that should be done. And again, I think Mr. Collin for his due diligence. Uh, and that's all I got to say about that.
Alright, thank you. So, um, take it to a vote, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this is for the introduction of ordinance twenty-one, dare zero, one, one. Public hearing will be set for June tenth, twenty twenty, uh, at that council meeting. Uh, just as a side note, the June eighth meeting for the conference session falls on the day of election when that schedule was set two years ago. Uh, that meeting is gonna have to be canceled, just as a side note. But the public hearing for this will be June tenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, I have a motion, it's Cole Wilson, a second by Mr. Harrison. I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely for the introduction.
Yes.
Ms. Cole Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. So order the public hearing is set for June tenth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you very much. Uh, Council President, echo to the docket. Would you like to move to, uh, public portion?
Yes, please.
Please raise your hand. Does anybody wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council for, uh, today's public portion?
Yes?
Yes, ma'am. Your name?
Yes.
Yes, your, your name, ma'am?
My name is Faith Ann Pearson. I live at one forty-five Sherman Avenue. And I have a question. It's referencing a demolition of, um, properties. Um, I happen to notice that the fire you guys ha- that happened on Clinton Avenue by the, between the bar and the church, the, uh, building came down extremely quickly. I'm just curious, why did that come down so fast when there is a piece of property where a tree is coming, literally pulling the, um, bricks off of the side of the house into the street on Clinton Avenue? I do believe that the one property you have scheduled for Clinton Avenue is definite to be removed. I have it right in front of me, along with the Hart and the, um, Tyrell Properties. The, uh, property I'm talking about on Clinton Avenue is, right now, it's next door to a Jamaican restaurant. And the lady is extremely nervous because if the proper, if this building does come down, it could take part of her property and it could damage the, the restaurant. And she's happened, having a tough time with COVID, just trying to keep. So I'm just curious as to how this one property on Clinton Avenue was, it had a fire and it ended up being demolished within a week, flattened and leveled. And all these other properties we've been talking about which are fire damaged and all are still standing. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure who would be able to answer the question.
Yeah, normally, ma'am, during public portion, unless the council president for a special reason wants to indulge somebody, we don't do question and answer. Uh, if the council president does wanna indulge you here, she'll let you know. Uh, but if she doesn't, just you can email me a clerk of Trenton, New Jersey, and I'll try to get an answer for you.
Thank you.
But I'm gonna defer to council president to see if she wants the question again.
If she could submit her information to you and you get back to her.
Okay, Ms. Pearson, if you submitted, uh, your question to me, a clerk of Trenton, NJ.
I will do that tomorrow. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll forward it on and I'll get you, I'll try to get you an answer, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next, uh, anybody else wish to be recognized for public portion for the five thirteen, twenty-one council meeting? That being said, do I have a motion?
Some, some.
I have a motion by Council President McBride to close public portion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's four. Any opposed? So order, public portion is closed. We now move to civic comment.
So this evening, we're going to, um, bypass civic comment if it's alright with the majority of the council. the majority of the council.
I have a motion by Council.
Fine, fine, me.
I have a motion by Council President McBride to, uh, suspend civic comment for the evening, and a second by Ms. Cole Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need one more?
Aye.
That's four. Public portion, uh, will, the civic comment portion is suspended by the council president this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Mr. Harrison to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Michelle. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, so ordered, we are adjourned at seven fifty-nine PM. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to the Trenton City Council Meeting for January, or for May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. We appreciate your time. Uh, once again, just to cover, uh, the, um, the announcement at the top of the meeting, all forty-four polling places will be open for the election on June eighth. If you wish to vote in that election and you are not registered, you must do so by May eighteenth. You can get a registration form at my office or the, through the county registrar of voters. Um, there will be no automatic mail-in ballot sent out like the last two elections. If you were a mail-in ballot before, you will still get a mail-in ballot. If you were not a mail-in ballot before, you will have to request one from, from the county clerk if you wish to vote by mail. That being said, if you have any other election questions, please contact my office, I'd be happy to help you. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great night, and please get home safe, if you're not already there.